Good evening and welcome to the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting for Wednesday, July 12, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield, and GCTV is recording this meeting. We'll move right into our agenda and a roll call, please. Secretary Exstrom.
Member Hinni.
Here.
Secretary Exstrom? Oh, sorry, thank you. Member Denieve?
Here.
Thank you. Myself, I am here. Member Johnson Musad?
Here.
Vice Chair Martini?
Here.
Chair Poiroti?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mary Weedgardner, and it's my impression that she will not be joining us this evening.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We're good. We're, yeah, we're called to order at 6:01 PM. And how about a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on June 14?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none will move to a vote. Anyone abstaining? Any no votes? That passes unanimously. And public comment? Susan Par, no one? No one? Okay. Wow. Mr. Paquette, so early in the meeting for you. Budget update.
Good, so I'm going to take about 45 minutes to just go over this monthly update for all of you. No, we are wrapping up the year and we have, the city has till, they give all departments, including ours, till the 24th to do final cleanup of things. So we are still going through and looking through. If you look and see there are still some funds that are encumbered. I will, I'm happy to report that retroactive pays have been calculated and paid out. So, and those are all reflected in this budget update as you have in front of you. You'll see that it is showing a quote unquote negative balance, but again, as we're closing the year, we're going to be doing our year-end reclasses to and from the various accounts to make that zero. And so, and all things are going according to plan, I'll say.
Excellent. Thank you. That was a quick 45 minutes. Any questions or comments about the budget? Secretary Exstrom, please.
This is just more of a clarifying. On the revolving and special revenue accounts, there's a, the last two columns, one is remaining balance.
Correct.
And the last is FY '22 prior year revenue. So which should we be paying attention to, I guess? Is it, so we had $3,072 remaining, or we have that now? I guess.
We, we have the, the difference with, the, you don't want to compare the remaining balance to the prior year revenue column. The prior year revenue column you'd want to compare to the, the second column in from the left, the revenue. So we're, prior year revenue of 3.56 million and 22. Our current year revenue of all those is 3.4 million. So slight decrease in, compared to prior year.
So what we want to be looking at is the column that says end balance, yes?
Remaining balance because the, you have to take into consideration there are some encumbrances.
Okay.
So you do want to take the remaining balance column to see.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to make sure we were all looking at the same thing.
And you'll notice, like I said, there's, this is something, just a minor thing where the athletic revolving account has a deficit of $1,900. So we will be addressing that to bring that to zero. But I'll remind you, that's some of the reasons why when we went through our FY '24 budget, we had to increase our local appropriation because the fees that we generate from athletics aren't covering what, in total, what it is that we'd need to offset, so. But in the grand scheme of things, $1,971 quote unquote deficit is nothing.
Thank you, Andy. Any further questions or comments about the budget? Vice Chair Martini?
Not specifically about this budget and these numbers, but my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the state budget that was just finalized includes additional Chapter 70 funding, and I wanted to know if we are anticipating any of that coming to Greenfield.
Whatever the increase would be, yes, it would be coming. The, off the top of my head, I don't know, but the quote, I'm going to say, the issue is that Greenfield funds the public schools above the minimum required. So even though we get an increase in Chapter 70, technically, they don't have to give it to us because they're already funding us above minimum.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Andy. And next on the agenda, we kind of introduced the topic at the meeting in June of moving to a hybrid meeting format. A couple of things, and I know that Christine will interrupt me if I forget anything or get anything wrong here. So it's interesting that we're, we're going at this on the heels of what I would consider kind of disasterous technology in June. And we weren't even trying to do anything fancy. We were trying to be practically Amish and use just the screen, but that didn't go so well. So a few things. The city already uses this technology in this room. It's worth pointing out that this is the only room where we would really be able to hold a meeting and have access to hybrid technology. There is, Jean's looking at me, there is this technology in the city's second-floor meeting room, but we can't, I don't think that has the capacity to hold us, but please.
The new library.
Then tell me about what would be available in the new library. Are they going to have a screen like the one here?
They have a, I mean, I haven't seen it since, but they have a huge meeting room that will hold, I think around 100 people. And then they have a smaller meeting room that, you know, for smaller meetings.
Okay, so we'll have to get some information about when they're going to be bringing that online and ready and potentially an option, because that's great, because it is hard to only have this one room available really for our needs. So that is terrific to hear. Thank you. So the other things that we've learned, Christine talked to Fernando, who's the director of IT for the city. We would probably be on a timeline. I wanted to actually bring it online for August, but based on their needs, one of which is supporting, bringing everything up in the new library. Fernando feels like having our folks trained, which is the second thing, and then being able to support us in this endeavor, that September as the move is a more realistic timeline for us. So we would try to do it in September. And I guess at this point, before we have any further discussion, I would ask for a motion that the Greenfield School Committee adopt a hybrid meeting format for regular monthly meetings as soon as practicable, and ideally for September 2023 meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you both. And further discussion or questions? Nothing? Did I miss anything?
The only thing, just to clarify, is that IT support is not available for regular, generally for evening meetings. So there is always, as we well know, the potential for a technical issue, but generally, it works fine.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, you know, Fernando or other city IT folks won't be at regular scheduled meetings.
Sure. Thank you. And then what I would ask is that if there are members of the committee that are interested in being trained, I don't know if you've seen at City Council, they have a couple of folks who kind of sit at the end of the table and have some sort of, I don't know, contraption that they're using to manage the hybrid piece of it. So we would need to be trained on that. I would say just send me an email or talk to me tonight if you're interested in being one of the people that would be trained. And anything else? Nobody's jumping. So we'll move to a vote on this. Anyone abstaining? Any no votes? Okay, so that passes unanimously. And next on the agenda, we have a process that we don't do very often, but it is a DESI process for reviewing and approving a private school operating in the city of Greenfield. And my understanding is, Mike, it's Mike, right? You're the head of the school. You're here. Would you mind, just in case we have discussion or questions? And can you quickly just introduce yourself?
Good evening. I'm Mike Placinta, and I'm the chairman of Providence Christian Academy, which is a ministry of Providence Moldavian Baptist Church on Federal Street in Greenfield.
Great. Thank you. And then I just ask if you hang out for a second in case folks have questions. So I would direct the committee, actually, let's do a motion first and then we can have a discussion. I move the Greenfield School Committee approve the operation in the city of Greenfield of Providence Christian Academy beginning in the 23-24 school year. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And so there's a few things I would point out, and then I would open it up for discussion. Everyone has in the materials this form, which comes from DESI and is filled out by the school and sent to us, as this is a state-required process. I would also refer folks who may not have read it carefully to the piece at the very bottom of the form about, that instructs the school committee on our role. And then you did also get some materials related to the curriculum as required as a part of this process. And any questions or comments from the committee?
Well, I, I have spent quite a bit of time researching the ABECA curriculum, and I'd like to make a statement at some point in time.
Now would be the time.
All right. So what I have learned is that PCA, Providence Christian Academy, is not a grassroots local school. This is a franchise that teaches fundamentalist ideology throughout the world. They use the ABECA curriculum, which I believe is in direct opposition to the values of GPS. The curriculum is full of false information, and students who learn from it have a harder time getting into four-year colleges and universities because they will believe a whole set of things that are erroneous and be historically illiterate, which I think is a bad thing for our community and our country. And ultimately, this is going to be reflected in a real breakdown in the separation of church and state, which is really the agenda of these curricula. In the ABECA textbook, "America, Land I Love," Satan is blamed for the spread of the theory of evolution and modern psychology. It is taught in the Civil War section that black slavery was just cheaper than indentured servitude, and slaves were immigrants. In the science textbook, we learn that we must reject any scientific ideas that contradict the Bible, and there was only one Ice Age and that it lasted a couple of hundred years after Noah's flood. The history section will teach us that the Great Depression was created by socialists to destabilize patriotic Americans, and the LGBTQ issues are listed under United States History, Heritage of Freedom, and Christian Perspectives Cultural Decay section, saying "Traditional American family values have dramatically declined when the traditional heterosexual family comes under attack. All of society suffers." Schools that use ABECA have come under scrutiny for expelling students who are LGBTQ or the children of LGBTQ parents. ABECA is the founder of the Pensacola Christian College and has been fined $44 million by the IRS for lying about being a nonprofit. They've had to apologize for their racist past because they didn't allow interracial relationships. They outlawed dancing. Condoning this is owning it. And this is an example of educational malpractice that has been widely researched and studied. And I could not say that I support the youth in our community. I would not be an ally or a supporter of young people if I voted to allow the school into our community. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions?
I was just going to ask for more context about what our role is with this. I don't know the context, really.
Okay, so it is a requirement of the state that when a private school begins to operate in the, the city, the town, the whatever, that we go through this process. And it's really, I, maybe I should read what's at the bottom of the form. "School committees shall approve a private school when satisfied the instruction and all the studies required by law equals in thoroughness and efficiency and the progress made therein than in the public schools in the same town, but shall not withhold such approval on account of religious teaching." We also did seek the advice of legal counsel, and the advice that we received was very strongly that we should approve.
The qualification was that it has, the, the attorney had never seen a rejection of a private school opening, and that the committee needed to be very cognizant that we cannot reject a private school based on the religious teaching. So I, that was the clarification, so that there needed to be a good basis for rejection of the school being approved.
I guess, I mean, well, first of all, I'm noting, I'm noting that on the form, it says it does not have special education programs. So I, I just don't see how we could possibly say that a private school that doesn't offer special education, you know, equals in thoroughness and efficiency and the progress made therein that in the public schools in the same town? I mean, that's just not possible, right?
It is actually, if we were to, like a city or a town that has a parochial Catholic school, they don't have to offer special education services. What happens with private schools in any area? We actually already participate with the charter schools. They get what's called proportionate share of our federal grants. So they get a proportion based on enrollment of our Title I, Title II, special education grants to use. And in terms of the special education grants, part of, generally what that is used to do is provide special education services for the students at the private schools. So it is absolutely actually fairly common for a private school to not.
And then, do, have you all reviewed the curriculum? And would you agree with this statement that it would equal?
So it is one of the programs that is listed as being an approved homeschool curriculum. So the district already does approve the program for students who are being homeschooled using this curriculum.
And on what basis do we do that? I mean, who, who reviewed the curriculum and made that approval?
So the district does. It's under Karen's office now, but that's, I mean, that's been in practice. It was in, that was one of them that has been approved prior to even Karen being in that office. I hear the concern. I, I believe the argument could be made that that is a religious perspective that is being shared. I'm not arguing to or fro. I'm sharing what I believe the perspective is, that, that piece of the instruction would be religious basis. So it is a challenging question to undertake. You know, literacy, mathematics are a little bit different. I appreciate the information Elizabeth shared about other elements of the curriculum.
There's math issues as well with that curriculum. This was just the tip of the iceberg.
I'm sorry, Member Johnson Musad, were you done?
So just to, I guess I'll just summarize what I've heard. In the past, we've approved this curriculum for homeschool use, but if we were to take a fresh look at it now without that history, I don't know what the recommendation would be from our administration and from Karen about whether this meets the criteria that is laid out for us.
I will certainly tell you if that question is the crux of the discussion tonight. I will, I believe it would be in our best interest to follow up with a legal opinion on what, where this lands. I think that would be the best place there likely. I won't be surprised to learn if there were past cases related to this, and I would prefer to have a review of previous legal arguments before making a, a decision based on that.
Okay. All right. I look forward to hearing what others have to say, but I'll be hoping to make a motion at some point to defer this decision until we can get that legal review. Thank you.
Sure. Vice Chair Martini?
Thank you. When I was reviewing the information provided and taking note of the item that Chair Poiroti just read from Mass General Laws, Chapter 76, I felt that I couldn't tell from the limited information that was provided whether or not the instruction that would be provided to students in this school equals in thoroughness and efficiency what would be provided by Greenfield Public Schools. There wasn't very much. And from the limited amount that was provided, just for example, in regards to reading instruction, it seems that it was mainly focused on one out of only five of what are known to be the essential components of reading instruction. I would be concerned about that. Phonics is absolutely essential to students learning to read, but as we well know, especially through this district's efforts to align our reading instruction with cognitive science, there is, it's also crucial to provide phonemic awareness instruction, fluency vocabulary, background knowledge, and comprehension instructions. So I, I felt that what was provided was lacking in those areas and had concerns about that. And other than that, it seemed like a very big blank to me. I didn't see any comparison or analysis as to how the program of instruction would, would equal what is provided by the district schools. Thoroughness and efficiency, I didn't see any references to how the, the curriculum is aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum standards, the frameworks, which would help me understand whether or not it was adequate. So I just felt that it was very, very limited and not, not adequate as to the information provided. And in terms of whether or not we can be satisfied with the progress made therein of those students, there wasn't any information provided until, it was not provided in the initial set of information as to how, how students would even be evaluated in this school. So I, they're not going to be taking MCAS, which is our, you know, big broad brush when it comes to student progress. I saw in the second set of information that was provided, a reference to one, one tool, student assessment tool that I am not familiar with, and there was no information provided about how it compares to what is used by Greenfield for a district-wide assessment. So I have so many questions, and, and I wish that a great deal more information would have been provided.
So I can speak to Iowa testing is a, it's a long-used, has been used nationally, sort of summative assessment regarding reading and math. It's not an uncommon assessment that's been used. So it's a, I don't have a ton of detail in my head about it, but it is, it is definitely a known, common assessment.
Okay. And how would the district compare that to our own district-wide assessment like MAP?
There is a little bit of a different standard for a private school in that they are not held to the same requirements that a public school is in a variety of areas. So they have to monitor assessed progress and monitor progress, but it doesn't have to equate to our assessment. So they don't have to have an assessment that equals MCAS. They just have to show that they are monitoring the progress of their students.
Really? So that, that's not made clear to me by just reading Chapter 76, Section 1, and the law? Is there more information available about exactly how those standards are different?
There, there is actually. And I'll find it. So what I, I just want to clarify one piece.
Thank you.
From you, that you are looking to see a more detailed alignment between the curriculum resource that's outlined and Massachusetts standards. That is something you are hoping to see. Did I, did I hear you correctly?
It would be helpful to me in making a judgment about whether we can be satisfied that the instruction in all the studies required by law equals in thoroughness and efficiency that in the public schools in the same town. I, I don't know how else I'm supposed to evaluate that, so.
You know, it's a, it's a very interesting process to ask a school committee to go through, but they're quite clear in guidance that we don't get to send it up to DESI, and DESI doesn't get to exempt us, which would be lovely to ask them to do the process. So here are some basic guidelines from DESI, keeping in mind the last guidance that was written from the department was in 2007. I did confirm that is the most recent guidance around this process. So from curriculum requirements, there are no specific requirements for private school curriculum, though the approval committee does look to see that students are making academic progress comparable to the public school. Again, I think that's an interesting requirement. Teacher certification and hiring, no state policy exists regarding teacher certification in non-public schools. Food services and lunch, school lunch requirements, including funding for schools, offering the National School Lunch Program, are managed by the Department of Ed, so that would be a DESI issue. Length of school year, there is no state law regarding length of school year. Record-keeping and reports, schools must keep enrollment, attendance, academic, and conduct records for all students and must file a report with the local school district each year. Health and safety, all secondary schools, this is not a secondary school at this point. Transportation, students who attend private schools are entitled to the same rights and privileges of transportation to and from school, so we would be required to offer transportation within the city of Greenfield to the students attending this school. And testing, testing isn't explicitly required in state law, but approval committees have used standardized testing as a criteria to determine whether the schools are comparable to public schools. I can't speak to whether or not it would answer your question, but Iowa is a standardized test.
Can we have a copy of that, please?
You absolutely can.
Thank you. When was the last time Greenfield approved a private school? This school committee approved a private school in Greenfield?
I, I don't know. You don't have a policy about it. The guidance that we have is really related to what the Department of Ed recommends a committee put in their policy, which is what I shared with Mike, which is why he provided the, the information. It's really around what DESI says we should ask, but we do not have a policy around approving, or, or I would say, I could not locate a policy regarding approval of private schools in our policy manual.
Okay. And this, this curriculum you said was approved for some homeschool students. How were those students being assessed as to whether they're making effective progress or not?
Families are required or asked to provide an end-of-year portfolio to demonstrate progress. It's the requirement.
Basically self-reporting.
Correct? Yep.
Right. When was this given to us? I mean, when was this, it doesn't, there's no date on this form, so when was this submitted?
This notification of private school was, so it was originally submitted as a draft a few months ago, but the person who sent it to me, sent it, made an inquiry. I shared that we needed their curriculum, and then that person left. And then Mike reached out to me, I don't know, a few weeks ago anyway, to follow up on the process and to, to get it moving. So this was the first meeting since he and I have communicated about the, the school and the documents required.
Okay. Well, I have to say, I find it Okay. Well, I have to say I find it really difficult for this to be presented about six weeks before school is supposed to start. And the school committee certainly should take an interest in making sure that a private school that we approve and certainly our homeschoolers and students in similar situations are receiving an effective education. I don't, I don't feel that it's fair because we're not being given an opportunity to say we need more information, this is what we need, and have time to have that brought back to us without putting whatever families are interested in this school in a really difficult position. And I'm sure the people who want to run their school at the same time, if we don't approve them right now. So that's, I don't appreciate the timing.
Well, you don't have to approve it tonight. I'm quite happy to get whatever information Mike and I have communicated multiple times. I think we've been working together easily.
We're required, search and interrupt, to provide information 30 days before the opening of the school. And what we decided is to do ahead of time to provide you at least a few more, a few weeks before that, to give you the proper information. We followed every guideline to give you the full information and everything that's required by law or state.
If there's information that you want me to get to provide more basis for your thought, I am quite happy to do that. You just need to tell me. The issue in terms of if the school is approved for the start of school or not, from everything I have read, basically is related to the issue of compulsory education. So worst case, as far as I know, based on what I have read, if the school is not approved by the first day of school, it would appear that the consequence, if that's the correct word, would be that the students who are enrolled there could be considered tardy or truant by the Greenfield schools. But we have a list of the students, so, you know, we certainly are aware of who they are and that they would not just be not doing anything. But we have, we have another meeting before school starts.
How many students?
I believe there are 31, I believe, the students. Could be wrong. 31 or 32.
About that. Grades K through 4.
K through 4.
Secretary Exstrom?
It will come as no surprise that I sort of look at this from a business standpoint because I've been sitting with the budget for so long and been here and looking at policies and all of those things. What I have, and I get frustrated with, but it is the way it is, schools that are not public schools do not have to adhere to the same things, I'm just backing up with superintendent, do not have to adhere to the same laws, rules, almost anything that public schools do, which is, which is part of the reason that schools like, is it Four Rivers, can sort of, I don't want to say do their own curriculum, but the way that they teach and their methodology is sort of up to themselves. I say that very loosely. You know, I attended a private Catholic college. I had to take Bible classes and Bible study classes throughout my time there. I'm not Catholic. I didn't really adhere to it. Not, didn't adhere to it, but it wasn't something that I had a background in. And what I do know is, yes, there are lots of things that can be couched as this is a religious freedom thing. And I don't, I don't even want to touch that. But from a market competitiveness way, if there is no one who will attend the school, if for whatever reason people aren't happy with what's happening there, the school won't exist. And I know that's sort of a, you know, sort of a loose thing, but if they aren't able to do their jobs and the students aren't able to succeed by any standard, they won't exist very long.
Thank you.
Just playing devil's advocate, that's all.
Member Johnson Musad and then Vice Chair Martini.
It just, you know, I think there's this aspirational sentence in here in Chapter 76, Section 1. And then there's the reality of what's actually happening. And I've been in, I used to work in HIV/AIDS and we had these HIV/AIDS community planning things. And it was all very aspirational, but then sometimes the government would just say, "You have to vote yes on this." And so I really don't like it. I don't like it at all, to be honest. I really believe that we should be following this aspirational part of the law and not the way it's actually being operationalized. But I'll look forward to hearing from our attorney about whether we're mandated to do that or not.
I just wanted, sorry.
I had said, Member Johnson Musad and then Vice Chair Martini and then,
Oh, okay.
Member Wall, go ahead.
I just wanted to add to the piece of the discussion from Secretary Exstrom in terms of whether or not people will stay with a school that is not doing well. I don't think that's really accurate. I mean, New York is certainly contended with the problem of Orthodox Jewish schools. They're turning out students who lack very basic skills. And I agree with Member Johnson Musad about trying to comply with the spirit of the law and not something else. So I would worry about that. I'm really not interested in the religious discussion about it. I am interested in ensuring student outcomes. And I don't really see, I feel that I don't have enough information to support it at this point.
Member Wall, go ahead.
I would just like to know what happens if we voted no.
Hold. There's, there's information. There is, okay. So the school would not be able to operate in terms of compulsory attendance, meaning the students would not be considered to be enrolled in school if we don't approve. And then that, that the students would be considered truant from our record-keeping. And then the private school, I'm just, just looking. There is no appeal to the Department of Education. To the point, a question that was asked about, you know, if we vote it, we own it. You own it to a very limited, just for the sake of responding to that, you own it to a very limited extent. That as long as the school committee acts reasonably and in good faith in carrying out its statutory approval function, its potential liability is minimal. I do not see any other element to this guidance that speaks to what would happen if you do not approve, other than students who go there would not be considered to be attending school for the,
And what, what does that mean for the family and the student? I mean,
So at the end of the day, I mean, the school district, if we have students who are truant by the definition of the law, then we have a process where we meet with families to talk about school attendance. At the end of the day, they could, we could file a CHNS for, you know, students in need of services with the court. We could file with DCF where the families could share that they are homeschooling. So there are options at that stage for the family.
So at this point, I would like to move that we table this until next month so that we can hear what the attorney says.
Second. Do we do a discussion on the tabling? I think we do. Let's do it, if everyone's all right, we'll do a discussion on the tabling and we'll go from there. Member Denise.
I just wanted to say really quickly that there are two test cases of this that have happened recently, one in Oklahoma and one in Somerville, Massachusetts. And that happened last year at this time. So while it's potentially being tabled, perhaps we could take some time to privately, personally research those two test cases that have happened because it does detail what ended up occurring when the school committee did vote no in Somerville.
Other discussion about tabling. I would just say, give me a second to phrase it right. We run into situations all the time where it's obvious DESI paints us into a corner. The state paints us into a corner. I I struggle, I hear everyone's point of view on this, including the folks who want their children to attend the school. And I want to remind our committee that these are our neighbors and their children and, like all of us, are trying to do the best for their families. And for me, that piece is front and center. And I don't think tabling this for another month is going to put us in any different position on how to move forward. But I would, of course, go with the will of the committee.
Secretary Exstrom.
I know that we do spend some time talking about curriculum and what it is that should be chosen or not chosen. But the reality is, we are not curriculum experts. And I guess when I'm hearing, and I hear, I hear you talking about it a lot and I don't doubt whatever's coming out of your mouth, to be honest with you. However, I'm not an expert, and so I don't know.
Make sure you're relating your comments to tabling, to tabling right now.
Oh.
That's what we're talking about, tabling. That's okay. That's the motion on the table. Pun intended. Any further questions about tabling? Should we just vote on whether or not to table it?
Yeah. Any abstentions from voting? Who would vote no on tabling? That's two. So the motion to table carries, so it will be taken up at our August meeting. I appreciate you being here tonight. And I'm sure we'll have some follow-up.
Sure.
Thank you.
If there's any questions you may have, please, please do ask. Just to, just to let you know that Providence Christian Academy really started with our congregation seeing a lot of children being homeschooled. And we wanted to provide an opportunity for these children, future opportunities. And we believe that in-person having a facility or in-person schooling is a better alternative than homeschooling. And we don't want them to miss out on opportunities for the future. And this is how this has started, and then we saw an interest from other communities. And we said, why don't we open this to others who may have interest, interest in such school, such academy. It did exist in Greenfield before. There are a few of them that have closed in the past. There was even a Catholic school here too.
Was Cornerstone, is that the one that was here previously? Thank you.
And our teachers, the great teachers, a lot of them have been teaching in public schools. They're knowledgeable. And I can't comment much on the curriculum since I'm not an expert here either. But ABECA is probably one of the top used nationwide in Christian private schools. It is very rigorous. It is a very great curriculum for children, especially if you have great teachers to teach it right. And so that's all I want to add and let you know, we're not a religious cult here, okay? We're here to provide opportunities, especially for those who are homeschooled. At the same time, we're opening these for others to be part of it if they desire so. Thank you.
I appreciate your perspective. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, we'll move into Item 7 on the agenda, which is a vote to declare library books at Greenfield Middle School surplus. We would start with a motion, a move to declare the library books at Greenfield Middle School surplus as inventoried and presented to the school committee. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Anyone abstaining from voting on this? Anyone voting no? So that passes unanimously. And we'll move into, we have two policy items that, as we've done in previous meetings, Member Johnson Musad is the chair of the Subcommittee for Policy, will move us through those motions.
Okay, I'll make the motion, ask for a second, and then I can give a little spiel about each of these. I move that we approve the first reading of amendments to Policy BDE, Subcommittee of the School Committee, as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So there was basically a typo in this policy that made us want to consider it, which was, it said, "The school committee will have the following standing committees," and then it did not list the committees. And so then it got the attention of our Subcommittee and of our attorney, who also found problems with the idea of having the chair and/or the superintendent being ad hoc members of each of the subcommittees. So based on those changes that needed to happen, we looked at the mask model policy, which is word-for-word basically what we have presented to you. And it was voted unanimously from the policy Subcommittee.
So my question is, are you asking for us to just approve this and then you'll go look at it and with, make changes as, not as you see fit, but make changes as necessary and then bring it back to us and then we talk about it? Or?
Yes. So the process is, we bring it to you for a first reading, then we'll bring it back to the Subcommittee. So between now and then, if members of the public or if school committee members like you right now want to give us feedback, we can incorporate that at our committee and then bring you back something. So that's the process. It would come back to us for a second reading likely at the August meeting.
So then can I ask something?
Yes, please.
All right. So in the first line, it says, "The school committee shall appoint members to subcommittees at their annual organizational meeting for a period of one year." I don't know that that is possible, given that it further says the committee, number two, "The committee chair, subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the Subcommittee Chair and its members." The organizational meeting is where the committee chair is designated, elected, whatever it is. And if that person hasn't been doing the thing, they aren't going to know who's the, who or what or,
Mm-hmm, yep.
That was the only thing that stood out to me.
Yeah. So maybe the change would be something like,
The next consecutive meeting or something.
Yeah. This, this, this Committee Chair will present school committee assignments for, I mean, Subcommittee assignments at the, something like that, yeah. I see that revision.
If I may, in practice, the Subcommittee assignments are done at the second school committee meeting of the year.
Yeah.
And we've carried forward, you know, in January with the Subcommittee's from previous, but generally, there's not a lot of Subcommittee work happening at that point.
Well, actually, I mean, so I think that this is why in the past, I don't know. I mean, I think what we've seen is a lot of variety in the way that the organizational meeting is done. But one argument for having an organizational meeting separate from and in advance of the first meeting of the year is that you could appoint- the first meeting of the year is that you could appoint your Chair. And then at the first meeting of the year, they could bring their Subcommittee assignments, which would be useful because usually you have to immediately begin working on the budget. So at least having the budget Subcommittee in place would be helpful. So you can kind of see how this kind of relates as well to other policies that we have. So I guess I would, I'm not sure exactly what to do.
We could take the feedback as a Subcommittee and work on it, bring it back.
Yep. I would say for efficiency, it might be useful to, to approve it on first reading with the feedback to be directed to the Policy Subcommittee.
And we have precedent for that, totally.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Just one small thing. In regards to BDE, the Subcommittee's policy, it says that members to Subcommittee should be appointed at the annual organizational meeting for a period of one year. But it doesn't say anything about what if we want to form a Subcommittee mid-year, which we just did last month. So I was wondering if that should be accounted for.
Do we have another policy?
I was just gonna say.
I think we have another policy about ad hoc committees.
We do, I believe.
And it's covered by that. I can try to pull that up if you want.
Yeah, I do believe it's addressed in, I'm not going to know which policy it is, but we do have one on creation of ad hoc committees. And the ones that we have done mid-year, at least in my time on the school committee, have all been ad hoc.
Yeah, it would be less likely to form a permanent one mid-year, yeah.
I mean, in a way, it's kind of, the way this policy is written, it's, it would be the Chair's discretion whether to continue committees from the prior year. But I guess it would be wanting the Chair to be clear about whether they're creating an ad hoc or a standing committee. Would be a different process to just kind of disband something that's established as a permanent committee. So I'll see what it says here. Oh, yes, Susan Farber.
Because ad hoc committees are in our policy advisory committees. That is Policy BDE.
I think those are considered different, so. Looking at that. Yeah. I think probably.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
That we take back to the Policy Subcommittee the question of the creation of the Subcommittee assignments and the wording of that piece. And also that we ensure as a Policy Subcommittee that any advisory or ad hoc committees are addressed elsewhere in policy. Because I think if we try to put that into this, it will be a little bit more convoluted than we normally have in a policy.
Yeah, we can seek some guidance too about how to handle it. Member Wall.
I'd just like to suggest that we also have an organizational meeting before the first school committee meeting. I think that that would save a huge nightmare at our first school committee meeting.
And that could be feedback for the next policy that we're going to be considering, which is about that school committee organizational meeting. So, so really welcome your feedback on that as well. Any other comments? So I think the idea is to vote, to, to move it through its first reading to the Subcommittee to incorporate people's feedback. So any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote. Any no votes? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Okey dokey. The next policy, I will ask for a motion that we approve the first reading of amendments to Policy BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting on a first reading. I guess I already said that first reading part.
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, this came out of a discussion that we had at the, at this organizational meeting in 2023. There is a lot of, the way that the agenda was organized at that time. The public comment period came after the votes of the, for, for the officers. Some of us felt that if you're going to be making large choices that are very influential on the functioning of the school committee, that the public should have the opportunity to comment first. And so that is what the change is here. It's basically that highlighted item that says a public comment will precede the election of officers. That's the only change that we were recommending. And I'll just say first that the recommendation was not unanimous. Two of us voted for, Chair Poiroti voted against. And Chair Poiroti, I wanted to give you a chance to, to speak to that if you want.
Thank you, yeah. Just a couple of things. The first thing I would point out to the committee as a whole is that the policy as presented is not an MAS-C approved policy. If there are any in our policy manual that are not MAS-C approved or that we're not moving to that are MAS-C approved as a part of our realignment of our policies, I'd be hard pressed to find them. I also did some research. There is no precedent for this with either our city council. They do not take public comment for, before their reorganization, nor do any of the other school districts in our region take public comment. I think a big part of that is, as I've said in other discussions at the school committee, public comment is school committee business. And it's hard to run the business of the committee without the leadership elected. And the final thing I would say is that, you know, there's, there's this, been this feedback that the public should have a say in who our leadership is. And I would remind folks that the public is voting us to be their elected representatives in this body. And that is their feedback. And members should be looking to see who they feel would best lead the body and vote accordingly. That's my comment.
Well?
I am, I serve on several other committees besides the school committee. And we don't take public comment before we elect a Chair of those committees. And I also don't think that it's right when we are the people that are elected by the community to serve on the school committee, to then have people come and comment to us. They can come and comment to us throughout the year on anything that they think is wrong with the leadership of the committee. They have, they can come in December and tell us who they think should be the Chair going forward because we will know who the newly elected people are. But I think that that is one of the jobs of a member of the school committee, to elect the officers for the next year. And should not be, the, the public should not become part of it. If the council doesn't have public comment, nor does any other committee I've ever heard of have public comment.
Vice Chair Ekstrom or Secretary Ekstrom?
Thank you. I do, because when I was looking at this, I was thinking to myself, you know, what is it? Because we've worked together for so long, I've learned how you think. And I've been listening to Elizabeth and, and all the research that she does. So I sort of thought, okay, there's a rationale behind this and I want to sit down and find out what it is. And like, you know, aside from just having it on paper, wanting to have public comment. There was a time, and Glenn, you got so exasperated with me saying, where is the policy? That you finally said, Susan, we're trying to clean these up. And I went, oh, okay, now I get it. So when I look at this, this isn't a cleaning up. This is adding an additional layer of complexity, was my thought. And, let's see. And I do want to echo Chair Poiroti is, there isn't anything with MAS-C. And so I didn't see a precedent there. And then I went online and just put in the, put in the question, what happens at organizations? And I intentionally went and looked at different policies at different school committees, not necessarily close to us, just to see what's it like somewhere else. And so at Rentham, Cohasset, Agua, Mahar, and Springfield, they don't have anything like that. It's just the regular standard school committee designation. So those are my two thoughts. And following up on what Jean had said, that we should, that she thought, felt like we should have an organizational meeting. I, we used to have it. The only reason that we didn't have it the, in '21, when Superintendent DeBarge took over, is because we were, and it was all my decision because I was the ranking person. It was because I was, I personally was so concerned because we were coming back from COVID and it hadn't gone all that well. And I thought, you know what? She doesn't need to be worried about this right now. When they get back to school, it'll keep for a couple of weeks. Now, I, it's continued on since then, but that was really the whole rationale behind it. I'm kind of like, she has got way too much on her plate. So those were my thoughts as I was looking at it. I, I, you know, I didn't see anywhere else that it was being done. And we're making a policy more complicated, I guess, which sort of flies in the face of the things that you, that you guys have tried to instill. I don't know. That's what I'm saying.
Sure, briefly, Member Wall and then Member Denise.
I just wanted to say that there are three openings on the school committee this time. There will be three openings next time. If people don't agree with how the leadership goes, they should run for school committee.
Member Denise.
I think having a separate organizational meeting is incredibly important. We do not do working sessions. We have not done professional development as a group. We are dysfunctional as a group. And I don't think that adding another layer is complicated. I think that we're smart people who can walk and chew gum at the same time. I don't think it's a big deal to have public comment before the election of officers. We cannot, in one breath, say that we care about what the public thinks. But then in another breath, say that they are not allowed to influence the election of officers. We either care what they think or we don't care what they think. Public comment is an essential part of our meetings. It's in our policy. They provide invaluable input, which we have to take into consideration when making our decisions. So maintaining a connection between the public and the committee is incredibly important. And excluding their input on the election of officers is not just undemocratic, but it's potentially a tactic used to gatekeep power. So yeah, maybe the city council doesn't do it and maybe all the other school committees don't do it. But that doesn't mean that that's right. And MASK has told us in Subcommittee meetings that we should explore tailoring our policies to our beliefs and our feelings and the culture of our district. They've told us to deviate if we choose, if it works better for us. So I don't see a problem with changing anything. And I think that it would help the public trust us and care about this process more if we were more transparent in the very beginning by having a separate meeting and allowing their input. It really cannot hurt anything, but could in fact really help us in the long term.
Secretary Ekstrom.
So then, why in the past has, has, have things been brought to us that were being voted on? And there was some discussion here. Part of the rationale was, I'll paraphrase, all the other school committees are doing it. And that was part of the argument, to do something. So I don't know that you can use the, just because someone else isn't doing it, doesn't mean that we should. I get, I understand the cultural piece and understand the culture of our community and, and our school committee and all those things. But I sort of discount that because of previous discussion.
Well, I think different school committees function differently. Some of them function in very healthy ways and some of them do not. So I think that it might impact them differently. This might not be an issue for some school committees at all.
I'll speak and then Member Martini. I just wanted to say that a lot of the work that we have been doing as a Policy Subcommittee has been bringing our, our policies in line with the MASK revisions because MASK has, in many cases, it's bringing them up to date with the law. And, and they all have been kind of vetted. So, but that does not stop us from being able to put our own imprint on our own policies. We're not just rubber stamping every single thing that MASK sends our way. In general, we would want to make changes to it if we had a good reason to it and if we thought that it was important for our community, so. Vice Chair Martini.
I've been sitting here trying to think back to more details from a previous discussion we had as to whether or not to move public comment up in our agenda before a voting item. Because I remember at the time presenting some information about various other entities and what I had discovered through looking at their minutes and what have you. And that many of them always hold a public comment before a voting item. So I'm having a little bit of a hard times, like swallowing that nobody offers public comment before their selection of officers. But I also remember hearing some feedback at the time that, from other members, that it shouldn't matter what other people do on their committees. So really, it's about, I guess, what we think is important. Personally, I don't think that there is anything we vote on, except for that which is an executive session, that the public should not be involved in. So I don't see any good reason there why there shouldn't be a public comment before the selection of officers. I agree that it should take place at an organizational meeting before the first regular meeting of the year. And in terms of our policy and cleaning it up or making it more aligned to MAS-C policy, I appreciate trying to make things more streamlined or comparable across school districts. But I also don't think that MAS-C should define what the whole policy book is for every district in the Commonwealth. We should be making our own decisions according to our, our own values. So, so I, you know, I don't see any reason not to have a policy that is of our own crafting on that.
Member Wall.
Obviously, this will not pertain to me since I will be going off the school committee. But last time, I, I did not vote to allow the public to speak because I think it's not good to have to sit, as a member of the school committee, it would not be helpful to me to sit through a, people from the public telling me what an awful person I am and how much they hope I'm not reelected to a, a position of authority on the school committee. I don't see why we want to invite the public to tell the members of the school committee that they are not good enough to be a, an officer on the school committee. I just don't see how that's helpful at all. And I don't, I, I, if you don't like the person who is running for school committee, don't vote for them. But if you did vote for them, they have just as much of a right to be an officer and to lead the school committee as anybody else. And if you, as a member of the school committee, want to be an officer, it's up to you to go to the other school committee members and convince them that you should be an officer. You will have months after the election, you'll have November and December to do your campaigning to become an officer. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I guess I would just say that based on what I'm hearing, this policy doesn't really address at all what we want our organizational meeting to be, starting with, it's, it says in bold, at its first meeting in January of each year. at its first meeting in January of each year, we'll elect from its membership the officers. And we're hearing pretty consistently that that's not what we want to do. We want to have a separate meeting. So aside from the highlighted piece about a public comment, it seems like we have some revision to do. So I would ask that we do something similar to what we did with the first reading for BDE, in terms of taking this back to the subcommittee for some more work.
Thank you. A couple comments. First, I want to say, school committee members should absolutely not be having conversations in advance of the organizational meeting with more than, with a quorum or more of the school committee to line up votes. That would be a violation of open meeting law. Second, I'm very glad to hear there's a growing consensus on the school committee, that we want to have a separate organizational meeting in advance, because when I was asking for that in prior years, I was treated like I was crazy, and like it had never happened before. So I'm really glad to hear that. So we can certainly, as a school committee, as a policy subcommittee, bring that feedback back. But I think we do need a vote, yes or no, on that change as presented, to find out whether it's the will of the school committee to have a public comment period preceding the election of officers, so that the policy subcommittee knows what to do with this policy going forward. So is there any other discussion before we vote on that?
I'm just wondering, can we have the motion read back to us again?
Yes. To approve the first reading of amendments to policy BDA, school committee organizational meeting has presented.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before a vote? All right. All those in favor of?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Vice Chair Martini.
Last one, I promise. I just wanted to follow up on the piece of discussion from Member Wall about not wanting to be subjected to somebody showing up to public comment and lambasting one of us about how terrible we are. I don't, I don't want to experience that either, and nobody would want to. It just called to mind a public comment that I heard once from a venerable lady in our community, who got up to inform us that the public doesn't have to be nice to us, and they can, they can stand up and call us whatever they would like. And that's, and I recall thinking at the time, well, that is true, and I certainly, you know, support everyone having, having their opinion. That has not been my experience so far in the past year and a half on this committee. Almost every single person who has turned up to make public comment has been thoughtful and respectful, and those are the people that, personally, that I listen to, when they are here to talk to us. And the only time I recall people turning up and being disruptive or disrespectful was when we were discussing ending the MASC mandate. And that, oddly enough, was people being disruptive over something that we were going to vote to approve anyway. So I, I guess I'm saying I have faith in most of the public when they turn up here to show up and be respectful and explain from an intellectual point of view why they, why they support one vote or another about something, and also that people have the right to free speech, and there is a person designated to run that meeting, whose role it would be to enforce the rules, that people do need to show a basic level of decorum when they turn up here. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All those in favor? Three ayes, Elizabeth Glenn and Kate. And all those against? Three noes, Jean, Susan, and Amy. So we are a hung jury. I think Robert's rules asks us to bang our heads up against a wall, continuing to vote until we have a decision, but I don't think we'll do that tonight. Let's see. I guess, so I guess what I'll say is I'll withdraw the motion for right now. But I think it would be good to have a motion from someone directing the policy subcommittee to revise the school committee organizational meeting policy, to include an organizational meeting that precedes the first meeting, the first regular meeting of the school committee.
I'll move that.
And a second? Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Johnson-Sad, for moving us through that. Item 10 on the agenda is a school committee calendar update. I'm going to pass it over to Secretary Exstrom.
Yeah, sorry. So we have, we had discussed some time ago that we would have a committee, or, yeah, a committee calendar that included dates for, that all the committee meetings were taking place, full committee meetings, subcommittee meetings, and also anything that pertained directly to what goes on in the school committee, for example, MASC conferences, things like that. Due to my own health, that hasn't happened for some time, and, but I have been able to recently see again. So I have put something out there. You were all invited to it today. If you haven't seen it, just check your email. It is set, because when we talked about this previously, we had said the secretary would be the person who would add or detract things on there. So thinking about that, and I probably shouldn't have made this an executive decision on my own, but thinking about that, when I did invitations or extended invitations to everyone, I made it so that the chair or the vice chair and the secretary can edit or add, and everyone else is viewing. And the only reason I did that is because if the secretary is unable to fulfill their duties, then there are people who are already able to make those changes, but if not, we don't want that. That's fine, too. I don't really matter. So periodically, things will be added, and if anyone has any questions, please feel free, your thoughts.
I have questions. I'm so excited. I love the calendar. Thank you. Would it be possible to add, because what I was looking for mostly from the calendar, in addition to all of the events and the wonderful things that you added, were benchmarks. Is that something that we can add, so that we know? I know it sounds, it sounds like we should all just know this, but I would love to have something highlighted. Budget season is now.
Yes.
Evaluations are due by this time. Do you know where I'm going?
I know exactly what you're saying, and I did actually do that for budget season. For, if you look on December of last year, it is, there is just at the first, like December 1st, I put superintendent begins budget work here, or whatever it was, or officially begins. I'm sure the superintendent is thinking about it much further than that. But yes, that is absolutely something that is a wonderful tool for everyone.
Okay, so we can, so if we want to add a benchmark, or if we see one that is missing, we would just send you a message and you would add it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else about the calendar? Thank you, Secretary Exstrom, for putting that together. As far as I'm concerned, it's a constant work in progress. We add things, and, yeah, keep it going and keep improving it as we go along. But thank you, it's a great start.
And that isn't something that is going to live with me, when I, before I leave my tenure, I will pass it along to whoever it is that is going to be here the next time. I'm going to guess, most definitely, Vice Chair Martini will be here, as of January 1st. So she'll probably have the responsibility to give it to the secretary, would be my guess, and just, so we know how it's getting passed on.
Great, thank you. How about requests for new agenda items?
I have been recently talking to Senator Comaford and Rep Blay, and they would like to come and talk to us at some point in time about the rural schools bill. And they are open to doing that in the fall, and so I said that I would bring that up at the committee meeting and see if we could make that happen. I understand that we are not technically a rural school, but in that bill, there are provisions to help schools regardless. So it would be worthwhile for us to hear that. And then I have two other things.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to attend the MASC Hyannis Conference in November 8th through 10th. I believe there's some sort of early bird discount business happening this week, so I'd like to discuss that. That's obviously not a next month agenda item, it's kind of like a now thing, but should I email you about that? And we, okay.
If you actually email me and Lauren both about it, and if you have a link that speaks to the early bird, that would be very helpful if you forward all that.
Okay, I will do so. I'll put that on my notes. And then I wanted to ask you, Dr. DeBarge, about, last August, we had a school tour for city council members and committee members, and I was wondering if there are plans in the works. Do you have a second annual tour of the schools?
We are in the midst of our administrative retreat, and so planning next year is in process. So quite happy to share that out as soon as we button up all the details.
Okay, so that's something that we could expect this year? Is that what that means, or you're thinking?
Sure, yeah, happy to. Folks are, we are quite happy to show off our schools.
Wonderful. It was so helpful last time, and I really learned a lot. Thank you for making the time.
Any other agenda items? Okay, thank you. And we've got our reports, ASKP, take it away.
Thank you. I did curriculum updates, and then when I was rereading this, I thought maybe I should have done grant updates first, but you'll see a pattern after you hear about curriculum updates, and how it aligns with a lot of the grant funding that we are seeking. At GHS, we did come to a consensus, and they will be fully implementing illustrative math in Math 8, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry in the fall. The implementation for the year also includes professional development, so that staff are supported throughout the year in this implementation first-year process. Our history department, we continue to really try to actively engage our students in the civic process. They do have to complete a project in 8th grade, as well as sometime during their 9th through 12th grade years. We will be reapplying for a civics grant as well, to continue that support. At the middle school, because we haven't adopted enough, and we're looking always for more, we are going to roll out investigating history modules, grades 5 through 7. DESI has sent out, they are all free curriculum, accessible to districts in the state, but you partner with a company that actually provides high-quality professional development on all of those modules. They're units that really focus on guiding students in civic choices, identifying their roles in citizenship, and what they can do to make this a more equal, just, and liberty in the world. So we're looking forward to that. The 5th, 6th, and 7th grade will be rolling that out. One of the associate principals at Greenfield Middle School is going to be the instructional leader on that with Educurious, so we're excited about that. The elementary schools had adopted Eureka Math a few years ago, and Eureka Math has come out with a new and improved version called Eureka Math Squared. So we will be adopting that. It's just kind of buying a new car for a car that you've driven, so they're excited, because a lot of the glitches that really weren't student or teacher-friendly in the original model, they've kind of ironed the kinks out. So they'll be getting a little professional development on the new model. And district-wide, a lot of our work with the DESI SSOS team has really been around data dives and seeing where our students need additional support. We looked into adopting Imagine Math, and we'll be doing so in K to 12 for next year. It's not only an intervention math program, it's also an acceleration one, so I think that's exciting for teachers, when students need a little extra, because they're advanced in their classes. It's something that will challenge them as well. And the best part, I think, for us is that it also aligns with Eureka and Illustrative, which are two math programs in district. So we won't have to kind of piecemeal the intervention piece for one curriculum versus another. You will see the grant update kind of aligns with all of the curriculum updates. We applied for the following four grants. There is a civics grant that we have successfully gotten for the last four years, I believe, and this will be our fifth year applying for it, so hopefully we'll hear soon. I know the high school is really looking to expand civic experiences for our students, so they're really hoping, if the grant comes through this year, to take our kids either to the State House, the Freedom Trail in Boston, or other potential field trips, to really get them engaged in other opportunities outside of Greenfield. We did work on the investigating history grant, which will support the work at the middle school with Educurious. It not only provides professional development, but it links our teachers and our administrative team with learning communities in the state, who are also adopting investigating history. So teachers will be able to, you know, talk shop with other teachers about implementing the curriculum, as well as our associate principal, who's leading that. We are continuing getting support from DESI, which is nice. When we adopt high-quality instructional materials, they have been rolling out additional funds the following year to make sure that our professional development and the support for teachers implementing it is there. So we also applied for additional support for illustrative math for our high school. And then we also applied for FC 185, which will continue with professional development on high-impact instructional strategies that directly align with CKLA and amplify at our K through 7. So all of those are submitted, we're just holding our fingers and saying, please pick us and give us your money, DESI, so. And then lastly, we do have summer school that is happening right now. We have a Title I and Special Education Integrated Inclusionary Model happening. It started on July 5th, and I am happy to report, after looking at numbers and really checking attendance, we're servicing over 150 students so far, and we're only in day four. So it's really exciting that we have kids that are engaged in summer learning opportunities, and really taking advantage of filling those skill gaps, and supporting them in becoming grade level for September, so. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions for ASKP? Secretary Exstrom.
I don't have a question so much as a comment. Cameron is having so much fun at summer school that she chose to attend summer school this year, as opposed to go away to overnight camp for three weeks. Yeah, that smile is. You see what I'm saying, though?
Did she also tell you I let her in when it was raining, because she didn't want to get wet, and I had my umbrella for her?
I'm not discrediting how fabulous you are, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
She was very happy to go to summer school.
Yes, she is.
Other questions or comments for this, since you're in it? Vice Chair Martini.
You know I do, but there's, I swear, it's just one quick thing.
Don't believe it, Mike.
You've already previously shared such a great deal about CKLA and illustrative math, when the district was in the process of selecting those, and parents had the opportunity to get more information in terms of, that was presented and available to them at school council meetings. And I just wondered, is that also going to take place for investigating history, Eureka Math Squared, and the Imagine? I mean, I know that things like Imagine Math is, it's, it is not the instructional resources, it's just one piece, because it's an acceleration and intervention program. But still, I think it would be great if we could have more direct information just available to parents, if they would like to get it, by offering it in a context like that.
Sure, absolutely. The elementary schools and the middle school could do something at their first school council meetings. We also could put links on our website. Imagine Math, as you indicated, is not something that you, you know, you really would weigh in on, it's just an intervention online program, but, and Eureka Squared is, like I said, kind of buying a new car from a model you already drive. There's not really a lot of differences, except for what they fine-tuned on the accessibility, but certainly can share links, so people can explore. but certainly can share links so people can explore it or look at it. Investigating history is supplemental units, which is really adding to the curriculum that folks are already teaching, to really bring in the civic component at a lower grade level. So it's pretty exciting that they'll have that opportunity, but they're all online on DESI's website, and I can certainly post the links on our website.
That is exciting, and it would be great if we could post the links there. And I also just wanted to ask, I have noticed that there are still various places on the school website where school council meetings are not being posted accurately. It'll say in one place that it's to be determined, and in another place, there's a date and a time, and things like that, and I was really, really hoping that for this school year, we could get a grip on that.
So, speaking of getting a grip on the website, we are in the middle of updating it, and so there's behind-the-scenes stuff that's happening now. We have gone through literally every item. I don't know, you know, I'm not a website person, so I don't know all the, how to frame it, but basically every single item, every single page on the website has been reviewed to see if it is even current. So I will be frank, about 90% of what was available or living on that site was exceptionally outdated, like multiple years outdated. So those have been disabled already, and now we are finalizing two different pieces simultaneously. In the background, we're looking at a format for the new website and ensuring that the pages that will go back live are accurate. One of, like, we have the right names on the right pages. One of the things that we are very much looking to do is not have discrete entries of the same information in multiple places. Like, if you enter it in one place and it's linked to others, that's fine, but I'm not sure that's been the process, which is why you have things like you just described. So we're hoping for a launch to some degree at, in August at some point. We're, we're trying to move it along to get that done, but I'll make a, you know, royal proclamation when we do the new website, and, but it's, it is a ton of work to review all of that content, given the bulk that was there to be reviewed. So thank you for that feedback, but no, this is a priority to get it well in hand by the start of school is the goal.
I know. It's completely and totally tedious, so thank you for...
Yes, tedious is a very exciting word for that work, but it's, it's important for access, but it's, um, it's quite the thing. But we are, you know, we realize it's, it's critical to do, so thank you for making sure. We'll, I'll make note of that element for sure.
Other questions for the assistant superintendent?
I have one quick thing on the website, just, just before I forget.
Okay.
But in our policy meeting, we discussed the page for the policy and program subcommittee, and we would love if the format could match what we have for this, for this full school committee, where you have agenda, materials, link to YouTube, so we can easily see where we are in terms of minutes and things like that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll do the superintendent's update, please.
I want to finish the note from Glenn before I forget to check that.
It's just organized differently, the subcommittees area to the, yeah, that's all.
But I want to make sure that I write a sentence, otherwise tomorrow, when I sit and look at this, I will have no clue what it was.
Well, and I'll say another, I mean, maybe, I don't know if we want to discuss this as a full committee, but we could conceivably just have one page for school committee meetings with subcommittees and full committees, and then you just list what the meeting is, agenda, minutes, YouTube link, without having people having to go at all these different things to find.
Absolutely. One of the positives from our, the, we work with CES for the website updates and the, I guess, webmaster for, any, lack of any other word that I have for that, is he and John, our IT director, have looked at other models of, of websites, and so we can look at, you know, I can look at some different models. I, I personally would find it much more helpful to see all the meetings just running order regardless, but that... Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll do my very brief update. As Andy has said, we're ending one year and simultaneously planning the next, so it's very busy. Summer is not rest for administrators, full-year admin assistants, and certainly not for custodians. They are rocking and rolling, starting the summer cleaning and having to work around summer school in two buildings, so it's, it's a logistical exercise for Eric and the custodial staff and the, our maintenance staff, but they're well underway doing that work. I won't speak again about our summer school program. Staffing, we do have some district-wide positions that we're still looking for. We have hired a school psych, we've hired a speech pathologist, we're still looking for some additional, but to the positive at this point, almost all of the open positions that we have, we have applicants and are in the process of scheduling interviews. So we're, you know, we're pleased that we have response for most of the positions. I want to, again, just welcome Dave Messing as our Director of People's Services, who officially started July 3rd, and then Merrill Mouselli is now our full-time director at AEL, and they're both moving along with the work in the new year. We are starting, we have started today, it was the first day of our administrative retreat, and it is not as glamorous as that sounds. As I said today, the massage will be so light, you would not even think you'd had one, which they are not having them. It's, it is an oxymoron for sure. So we are doing all the planning of our professional development, our convocation, doing the logistics of operations that need to be updated, things that are seemingly mindless but have an impact on the function day-to-day in the district. We will be working with our SSOS folks tomorrow in looking at more detail of the strategic plan and ensuring we have cohesive plans and how that is wrapped into our staff meetings, professional development. For all of the plans that we have to submit for all of the work that we are doing, because we're a prior, district with two schools in status, we have to submit a priority plan. And then because of one of the grants that we applied for, we had to participate in what's called a landscape analysis, which is basically a program evaluation. But the outcomes of that, the priority plan, the landscape analysis and resulting plan, and the strategic plan are all the same work, and that was not accidental. That's very, that is a very expected outcome, given the intense focus we have had on the particular areas that we have identified that we need to improve. So we are not working in a million different directions, while we are, but they're intentional and they're all the same. So that's, that's a really, it's a difficult task to accomplish when you are trying to respond to requirements from a variety of different places, but we are absolutely committed to ensuring our efforts main, are maintained on the priority areas and that we don't get splintered and do a little bit of work in, in so many areas that we're not seeing any impact. So that takes a lot of intentional planning. And then the re-envisioning our schools, I will let Member Wall just give the update under the, the subcommittee reports, but there has been movement in that regard. So that's, there's, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot, but we're very busy, so I kept my update brief.
The surveys did go out to the teachers, and, and we will be reporting on the results of them at our meeting next week? Is that when it is?
Seventeenth.
It's next?
Seventeenth.
At 3:30? In the superintendent's office?
Correct.
In person.
And so, you know...
Jean, do you, just, you want to do your redistricting subcommittee report right now?
That's what I'm doing.
Since it flows? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So anyway, we will get everybody on the committee up to date and, and discuss when to bring the report forward to the community. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, other questions or comments for the superintendent about her report? Okay, you sure? That's, might be a first. I'll take it. All right. My report is, is fairly quick. Update on the school committee self-evaluation, MASC. Liz Lefon specifically has said that they can support the self-evaluation again this year, and I kind of got a commitment from her that she would push out the link for the self-evaluation to us in the month of July, although I have not had the same easy back-and-forth with Liz. She's got a lot of personal stuff going on right now that I know of, but she said they will do it for us like last year, so I imagine I'll get an update soon, and we can expect that we will get the self-evaluation this month. My other two things, typically the superintendent and I go in person to the city council meeting, which is the Wednesday after our monthly regular meeting, and give a report and answer their questions, and we have informed them that in July and in August, we will give them written, written reports, which is not unprecedented, and I got zero response from them when I told them that we were doing this, so I don't think they care. And then I just want to acknowledge the hard work of our food service department, and they had this great summer eats. This is the free breakfast and lunch and sometimes dinner program for children 18 and under that happens over the summer. The kickoff event, we had great weather at the pool, and it was very, very well-attended, and there were a lot of community resources there, and they are just doing a great job. My son and I have visited a number of different sites, including the food truck at Foster's, the food truck at the skate park, which is kind of cool, and so I just want to acknowledge that they're doing a great job. And then my only other thing, which didn't make it on the agenda, I can't remember if we acknowledged the softball team being state champs two years in a row, Class C. I don't think it was over before our last meeting.
Right. It did get put on the website.
Yep, I saw it there.
But you're, you're right.
Yeah, so congratulations to them, two years in a row, Class C champs, so that's, that's pretty awesome. And they beat Turners this year, not that we care.
We did acknowledge it at city council.
At city council, because it had just happened. Yeah, okay. And that is my report. And let's do subcommittees. Jean had her limelight. Glenn, anything else from policy? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. Will we be getting the old self-evaluation back? Will we be doing a postmortem? Will we compare old versus new after we do the new one? Or how will we be collating that data and comparing them?
So, I, I don't know, but I can ask Liz. And last year, they did the collating for us. It was our first year in a long time, at least my time on school committee, so I can ask that question and see where we get. It's, it's a good thing to bring up. I honestly don't know.
That would be great. I'd love to know what the eventual plan is with the data and how we improve using it. Thank you.
Glenn, did you have anything else for policy?
No.
Okay, great. And budget?
Nothing.
Nothing? You're not going to have a meeting?
Perhaps we should have a meeting.
You should have a meeting. Yes.
Yeah, and what that means is superintendent and I will chit-chat about times and what will be the topics. My guess is reviewing the funds that have been dedicated for the school district and how they are ultimately going to be applied. Yeah.
There you go.
So that's that.
Thank you. And Member Denise, do you have a report from the collaborative?
They had a budget meeting. It was voted on. That, that's it. They're done with their budget season.
Okay.
Nothing else to report.
Okay. And then we do have some correspondence that is in the online materials, but I don't think in the packet. And then executive session is only for minutes from previous executive sessions, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn rather than actually do just minutes for an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
And any, anyone abstaining from adjourning? Anyone opposed? We are unanimously adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you all.